I had actually applied for the subkey personal remarks. And, you know, I just changed. Where's that? So, it's not something that you're in public service.
I used to tell them that one more time, um, just these, uh, your, your, your public hearings tonight, uh, these are unfinished businesses, items, so we'll get these wrapped up. You do have an opportunity to speak, though. Item number three on the agenda is public remarks. If you fill out one of those forms up there, I will submit all forms to the chair, and you will be called up in the order in which I give them. I didn't keep them in any special order, so I apologize for that. But, um, just so you know, if you, we're about ready to begin, okay?
Yeah. Let me think about this.
I'm just trying to make sure. She said she was, she said, here's where I should, I don't know.
Uh, yeah. It doesn't accomplish anything. It's starting with three.
I didn't put him on the checklist. I handed in question.
Yeah, I don't know, hard bylaws.
I'm gonna go check on her.
I don't know.
Okay, you'll let me know.
The group sessions are eventually, I wonder, in terms of the, uh, flood rails.
Yeah, they, like, joined July 1st.
It should be in L M S.
The only thing I learned so far is if you want to.
Chair, you're ready to go.
When you're ready.
Okay, great. For interest of time, I'm gonna call the, uh, July 8th, 2024, meeting of Meridian Township Planning Commission to order at 6:31. Um, thank you. Yes, Mr. Sharkey just mentioned, I think everyone is here, but if you do wish to speak, we don't have any public hearings, so you would need to speak at one of the two places in the meeting for which we have, uh, public remarks scheduled. Um, and fill out a white form, hand that to Mr. Sharkey. I will start with, we'll call Commissioner Brooks.
Oh, here.
Commissioner Blumer.
Here.
Commissioner Rombach.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
And Commissioner Snyder has an excused absence, and Chair Schrader is here. All right. Thank you. Now, we are on to item three, public remarks. I will start at the top of the list here and call your name when it is your turn to speak. You will have three minutes. Mr. McConnell here will be, uh, running the timers, so you'll see the lights go on. Thank you very much. Corrective. Um, please, when you come to the podium, give your name and your address before you start to speak. And, um, it is the practice of the board not to engage in back and forth with public commenters. We listen to you as you speak. Um, I will start with Greg Fiedewa, please.
Name and address.
Yes, name and address.
Uh, my name is Greg Fiedewa. I live at 7030 Coleman Road in East Lansing. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of Fiedewa Holdings on our rezoning request tonight. Um, a lot of the neighbors had concerns about, um, the current water that's in the back of the property, um, along with future water that could be there as a result of the development. Um, and I want to note that, uh, a good, uh, way to resolve that issue is with, uh, detention ponds. Um, that also solves the problem and of the current problem and of the future problem as well. Um, detention ponds are used all over the township. They're engineered systems, um, and they're also, uh, flowing water. So, they're not just a ditch in the ground that fills with water and stays there. Um, they actually drain to the street and the, uh, um, into the water system. So, it's not just sitting there and it, it goes away, and it's, um, it's a foolproof system. It's, um, required by the Drain Office and approved by Meridian Township. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I have John Leone. If I mispronounced that, please let me know.
Leoni.
Leoni. Thank you.
It's Leoni. Um, so I have three minutes around the Fiedewa Holding? Already, or I just came up?
Yes.
Yes. Reassess about anything you want.
Okay, real quick, am I supposed to submit something?
Please give us your name and address.
Yeah, sorry, John Leoni, L E O N E, um, 4544 Dobie Road, Okemis, Michigan, 48864. May I submit a piece of paper?
I will.
This is just a map that I've, no, I live directly across from the church. I see what goes on there every day. And, uh, um, the idea of more traffic at all coming into there, especially turning north toward Hamilton, to me is ridiculous. You have, it's already, in, in fact, the backups would probably make it all the way to that driving circle that's down Hamilton, which already has backups. So, that's what the highlight there is, in my opinion, what already is a jammed area. You have schoolchildren that are there every morning and evening. Um, so to add more traffic there, to me, just on its face, is shocking. Now, I think how we got here, and motive isn't an issue, as I would understand, um, but there's many other places for housing. So, when you look at Okemis, why here? Well, there's a good, my gut feeling is that the church needed money, obviously. They tried to do the sale once, and, uh, it really isn't ultimately a factor. But, uh, I would think, because the ultimate rule is general, what, what this board deems is in the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. But when you add it all up, there's plenty of places to put more housing. This would jam up an already jammed area. Um, there's issue about the master plan. I, I don't know if I need to, I'm just gonna mention some things, so later on, maybe I'm not precluded from talking about them. Um, and so, and also, the other thing I'd like to bring up is, I've noticed in the paperwork, when it says about the, there's already, there's no need for, I guess, what I'll call a full traffic survey. I'd like to, I'm definitely gonna look into that, because it seems that the way they did those calculations, it's not clear when it says since the last rezoning. So, I don't know if it's master plan activity, which is not, as I understand, a formal rezoning. It's just an idea, and was done, I would imagine, according to the technical rules, but whether the community, to me, that's, I'm not, I'm no expert in this area, I'm an attorney, trying to stop being an attorney, and things keep happening. And, uh, I just want you to know, with all due respect, this will be taken all the way, because whoever's opposed to it has free legal counsel all the way up. I just don't understa, uh, it seems to me that Mr. Fiedewa, I don't know if he's here, don't know the man, um, just got a great deal on a piece of property, and is trying to put that in there. I only got 30 seconds left, so, uh, that's really just my point. I don't know enough, I didn't have time to study as much as I want to today, and, uh, these are just comments, but I just wanted to be here to make sure I'm on the list. My general, my general understanding is you gotta show up somewhere along the line if you want to be able to participate later. So, that's all, but, uh, to let you know, it's, anyone that's familiar with that stretch would say it's already jammed. And when you, you know, I don't, and maybe with my final two seconds, we should maybe get the public safety opinions on this, as to whether they think it would cause too much risk of additional accidents, et cetera.
Thank you very much. Next is David Fiedewa.
Uh, my name is David Fiedewa. I live at 278 Haslett Road, uh, Haslett, Michigan. And one of the things I wanted to kind of bring to the table is, is that we are a local business, and we're family-owned. Um, it's me and my four brothers, my father and my mother. My wife is the office manager. And by saying that, what I wanted to impress upon you is that we're not some company from Las Vegas or another state where we're just coming in to build this big building, make as much money as we can, and leave. No, we're here to be a part of this community. We've been running this business, or my dad started this business 44 years ago. And so, we're here to help and be a part of the community. My kids go to the schools here, and my brother's kids go to the schools here. And so, we're not here to just hammer up this building, make as much money as we can and leave. We're here to help and be a part of the community. One of the things that I wanted to point out, that we read through the concerns of all the neighbors, and they brought up traffic, as it's gonna be brought up here again. And one of the things about the traffic study is that we build a 2,000-square-foot unit. With our 2,000-square-foot unit, we can fit about 35 units on this property. And so, with 35 units on this property, we would have approximately 70 cars. And so, if you have all 70 cars, you have a portion of the people that are there working from home, and you have a portion of those people that are not working. And so, you're gonna have, let's say, 35 cars leaving between 5:00 AM and 9:00 AM. And so, with that amount of traffic, you're not having that large of an impact on what's happening on the streets. And so, and that's what I wanted to, uh, let everybody know, is this is not this massive development where you're having 200 or 300 cars come out of this. This is 35 cars over four hours. And also, uh, some of the board members expressed concern over the costs associated to the unit. And one of the things that we did, um, we wanted to do our own market research and understand what the market value is. And so, we had, uh, looked out into the market and found a DTN development. And the DTN development, on average, charges between $2 and $2.70 per square foot. So, with our 2,000-square-foot unit, that would be between $4,000 a month and $5,400 a month. That's the market rate. What we're charging, on average, is 2,400 to 2,600. And so, we are what would be considered a much more affordable option than our competitors. But here we are, wanting to be a part of this community. We have tenants that stay for, um, you know, years with us, because they go out in the marketplace and they look and see that this is the best option for them, and it's a quality-built building. Um, and so, I wanted to thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next up is Wayne Popeard, and just to make it go smooth, on, on deck is Joel Major.
My name is Wayne Popeard. I have lived at 4554 Seneca Drive for the past 46 years. I am opposed to rezoning faith Lutheran, Lutheran property to multifamily residents, meaning apartments. We asked our neighbors how they felt about the rezoning and the plan to build 35 to 60. That was mentioned last meeting. Apartments, we obtained signatures from revit, residents who live on Hamilton Road, Dobie Road, Forest Hills, Seneca Drive, Oneida, Kiwanau, Mirabou, Calvary, and Shaker Boulevard. Of the 75 residents that we spoke with, 69 of those residents opposed the rezoning of the 4.2-acre parcel of land to multifamily residential. That's 92% of the residents we spoke with opposed the rezoning. The signatures collected were turned over to the Planning Commission at the last meeting. Now, you know how the neighbors feel. They are concerned that this development is not the right one for our neighborhood. Mr. Fiedewa developed, is, is, development is far too dense for the land and is not compatible with other existing uses surrounding the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joel Major, and on deck is Cecilia Kramer.
My name is Joel Major. Address 4570 Seneca Drive. Lived there for 24 years with my wife. Thanks. Uh, talking in opposition of the rezoning of the Fiedewa, uh, land investment, specifically, I wanted to bring up, uh, this Planning Commission's regular meeting minutes of 2023. Um, some great questions you had of, uh, the applicant at that time about rezoning and getting into the master plan. Vice Chair Trusseis noted initial hesitation was due to overcrowding. Commissioner Richards mentioned several neighborhood residences were concerned over additional bus stops and density. Blumer, you had nicely, uh, mentioned the change in density would change the landscape. Senior Planner Sharkey, you've also mentioned that it would change the neighborhood, as it is currently just lawn. Commissioner Shrewsbury asked about the previous denial and objection, just like Commissioner Brooks had earlier. And so, I have a copy of that. I'd like to read that particular group's answers. Their discussion was homes backing up to the proposed property will require screening. There are many trees on the property, and there is a desire to preserve them. The configuration of the future development will probably require variances. Consideration for duplex development in the proposed area instead of a multifamily project, as this would be a better transition in the area, considering the single-family homes to the west. RC zoning is not suitable in the proposed location. Approximately 1/3 of the original property has already been developed. Traffic flow and safety in the proposed area is a concern, as the area is already very busy. Multifamily project would create a lot more traffic onto Dobie Road. Lastly, the proposed rezoning to RC is inconsistent with the future land use map. These are part of the minutes, October 14th, 2019. The original request was to look at those and what the findings were. Shrewsbury asked about it here. Brooks asked about it again. I would submit that for your reference, if you haven't looked at that. And then, lastly, is the very detailed, um, rezoning site plan that Fiedewa Builders had put through in, uh, October 11th, 2019, which I hold in my hand here, which is an extensive site plan, all shoehorned into the 2.9 acres, and ultimately denied by that group because of the 14 dwelling units that were gonna be put in there for a variety of things. That's it.
Thank you. Next up is Cecilia Kramer, followed by Chris Clock.
Basically, which is a reset to three minutes. So, we're gonna be just giving, you wouldn't wanna be. Christie, I don't.
Yes, hello. Um, my name's Cecilia Kramer. Um, I live in Forest Hills, 4560 Oakwood. Uh, but I'm here this evening as, um, the government liaison for the Faith Lutheran Church. Um, and, uh, I wanted to, uh, comment that, um, Mr. McConnell, uh, and his historic, uh, air flows, uh, and actually was correct, and that the property started off back in 1956, before 1956, as a farm, uh, field. And, uh, any trees and, um, uh, growth of bushes, et cetera, uh, was from, um, that era. It had, there are very few trees on there that would predate that. So, it is not old-growth forest. Um, the rationale for the sale can be, was correctly pointed out. It was a strategic move by the, uh, church council and the congregation, uh, to sell the northern portion of the parcel, uh, and use that money, uh, to pay off the mortgage for the church. Uh, this would allow the church more resources to be focused on community programs, outreach, et cetera, uh, rather than paying a $5,000 a month mortgage. The rationale for, um, the, uh, so, let me talk about the sale history. So, at that point, we put the, um, the parcel on the market. Uh, a number of people, uh, came up with, um, parkland options. Uh, well, uh, we could certainly, um, look to having that be a parkland, but, and turn it to the township, but the church is a, uh, 501(c)(3) and, uh, property tax exempt. Uh, so, it wouldn't gain us anything, again, to pay that mortgage. So, that's why we, um, were looking for someone to come forward, and the neighbors, uh, saw the sign out there for months and months and months, uh, never approached us with any option of purchasing it to turn it into parkland, um, but all enjoyed the view of the animals and trees. Um, we did have, um, single-family housing was brought up as an option. Single-family housing, we had, uh, one gentleman come forward, wanted to make a compound out of the, um, acreage, and put a house on there for himself and, um, and a couple of his children. Uh, then, um, when you're spending that kind of money on a house, uh, you need to have, um, even, uh, up against the current, uh, uh, Chief Okemis was a little bit too much for them, and, um, the, uh, it would, even with good maintenance, that needed more buffering for that type of an operation. Um, and the noise nuisance from Dobie Road was a problem for them, so that ended that , um, situation. But bottom line, um, the, um.
Thank you.
We would support the, uh, we would continue to support the, the rezoning and hope that you will be able to, uh, uh, go along with that and, and vote that in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Clock, and after that would be Deborah Major.
Hi, Chris Clock, 4538 Seneca Drive. I'm here to voice opposition to the property adjacent to Faith Lutheran being rezoned as multifamily residential. This area should be single-family residential. Looking at the criteria required on the reasons for rezoning request, this rezoning actually meets none of these criteria. First criteria, this development does not address a community need. Additional rental properties are not needed in this community. While the population did grow by 4,228 from the 2010 to 2020 census, the U S Census Bureau population estimate for July of 2023 actually shows a decrease in the population. The same data also shows the percent of owner-occupied housing to be 57.5% in Meridian Township. This is far less than the 72.5% for the state of Michigan, 64.8% for the United States, and even less than the 58.8% for the rest of Ingham County. I also checked with three nearby apartment complexes, all of which have current vacancies, so, um, none of this supports the need for additional rental properties. Number two, the development is not compatible with other existing uses surrounding this site. The largest bordering area is single-family homes on the west. The property that does exist on the northern edge maintains a buffer of trees and landscape between them and the surrounding homes. Mr. Fiedewa's massive multifamily development that uses every square inch of the 4.2 acres does not fit this area at all, and is far too dense for the la, for the land. Three, the requested rezoning would result in significant adverse impacts on traffic circulation, water and sewer systems, and the environment. Michigan Department of Transportation data for Station 33-5056, which is Dobie Road south of West Grand River near Monocay Trail, has an average annual daily total of 8,800 cars. Using I T E trip generation data, 60 units allowed would increase traffic by approximately 840 cars per day, which is a 10% increase on a two-lane road with no left or right-turn lanes. Even if you cut that down to 30, you're still a 5% increase in traffic. Replacing acres of undeveloped land with four acres of concrete will impact the drainage systems negatively. If rezoning is approved and drainage issues develop where none currently exists, the responsibility will be solely with the township. The 4.2 acres is also not in the master plan. Only 2.8 acres is in the plan. Increasing the size of the project by 50% changes the scope and the impact of the project sufficiently as to render it inconsistent with the master plan. Uh, rezoning also directly conflicts with other stated goals of the master plan, such as preserving the character of single-family neighborhoods. For all of these reasons, rezoning to multifamily residential should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Deborah Major, followed by David Clock.
Hi, my name is Deborah Major. I live at 4570 Seneca Drive, where I've lived for 24 years. I sent you a letter that was a little more detailed, but I have a few more points that I wanted to make. Um, first of all, I'm here to oppose the Fiedewa Holding rezoning on Dobie Road. Um, I, as you all know by now, the rezoning was denied unanimously in October 2019, and I feel strongly that we can't negate the work of the previous Planning Commission, three of whom now serve as our township trustees. My husband Joel attended the October 19 meeting, and we have read and reread the minutes, as I'm sure all of you have by now as well. The commissioners pondered all angles of this rezoning issue before denying Mr. Fiedewa's application. They took the decision and the effects of it very seriously. While RC zone, zoning isn't viable on this plot of land, sing, sing, excuse me, land, single-family-owned homes definitely could be viable. Consider a cul-de-sac with one entry, such as Dobie Circle off of Dobie Road near Hatch. Um, that kind of plan would be in keeping with the neighborhoods in the, to the east and to the west, while avoiding the negative traffic impact a huge multifamily complex would create. In addition, it would provide more green space, uh, while allowing some of those remaining trees, um, for the backyards of those homes. Having some remaining green space would alleviate drainage issues caused by high-density housing developments. These homes could be modest in price, if it, the missing middle discussed last month, while increasing homeownership in Meridian Township, which we definitely need. Mr. Fiedewa now has the right to build on this land, as all landowners do, but what is built must not negatively impact current residents, both now and in the future. Our township will benefit from growth in a responsible manner that makes sense for all. A multifamily residential complex here on Dobie Road doesn't make sense. I ask you to veto the RC rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. David Clock, followed by Peggy Anderson.
Hi there, uh, Dave Clock. I live at 4538 Seneca. I've lived there for 24 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding the rezoning of number 24013 by Fiedewa Holdings. I oppose the request from Fiedewa Holdings to rezone an approximate 4.2-acre parcel located on Dobie Road from RAA single-family low-density to RC multiple-family. I support the single-family low-density zoning, because those potential single-family homeowners would share our common interest and goals. Uh, at previous Planning Commission meetings, I spoke about the reasons we don't want the four-plus-acre parcel rezoned to multiple-family, reasons being, there's no need for additional rental properties in that area, 59 to 100-plus additional cars in our, car, cars in our backyards that generates more light and noise, additional traffic on Dobie Road, which would lead to more cut-through traffic on Seneca and Shaker. Seneca is a narrow street. Seneca and Shaker don't have sidewalks. I also spoke about the retention pond projected to be built 10 feet from our properties. Retention ponds create a habitat for mosquitoes and their diseases, along with attracting snakes. It's a horrible view for us homeowners. The smell of stagnant water, the drowning risk if no fence, if there's a fence, the retention pond becomes more of an eyesore. The risk of water being contaminated. I can't get comfortable with having four acres of water purposely directed toward our backyards, with our properties being the lowest point on Seneca Drive. It's zoned for 14 dwellings per acre. It will most likely be developed with 14 dwellings per acre if it's rezoned. My key point today, and this is critical, the concerns I just mentioned go away if the four-plus-acre parcel remains single-family, it remains zoned, single-family. Single-family homeowners will most likely want to keep a buffer of existing trees and landscape between their property and ours, which we also prefer. Single-family homes won't lower our property values. While rezoning to multiple-family, high density will reduce our property values. Remember, that four-plus-acre parcel was never zoned multiple-family when we purchased our homes. Let's not change the rules mid-game and move the goalposts by rezoning to multiple-family. One of the goals in the master plan is to preserve the character of existing single-family residential neighborhoods. I feel shoehorning 59 units into that four-plus-acre parcel is not preserving the character of our existing single resident neighborhood. our existing single-resident neighborhood. According to the minutes on the January 7, 2020, regular township board meeting, the rezoning was denied, quote, "in order to allow the developer to come up with a new proposal that will provide affordable, smaller, single-family homes in that property that will much better match the character of the existing adjacent neighborhood." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Peggy Anderson, followed by Jerry Fiedewa.
Good evening, I'm Peggy Anderson. I live at 4504 Seneca Drive. I've lived there for 31 years as a homeowner, and my home backs directly onto Faith Lutheran Church. The 2023 master plan says that one of the goals is to preserve existing neighborhoods. That's us. Those homes were built in the late 50s and the early 60s. I'm a 1963 house. We never have a vacant house in this neighborhood. It's homeowners with small children, it's retirees, it's young couples now all working from home. We are the neighborhood that you're supposed to be preserving by not putting this massive apartment complex on the, in our backyards. We survived the death of Edgewood Elementary and are still an active neighborhood. My main concerns, and I have lots of them, but the main concerns for me are drainage and traffic. If you've never driven down Seneca, you start out at a decent elevation and then you take a serious drop in elevation to a really low point, I'm one of the homes on the low point, and then it climbs back up again. At that low point, there is an easement with existing drains in the easement to stop the street from flooding there and to stop the neighboring homes, which have flooded, but before the drains existed. So you're going to put that retention pond right on the back of that low elevation where there's already drainage, because there's already a known drainage problem. So who's going to make me whole when, when my, when my house and my backyard fill up with water? Is the township going to make me whole? Is Fiedewa going to make me whole? I don't think so. The second one is the traffic, and that's been mentioned a lot. If you've never driven down it again, narrow street, you can't park two cars on a, you park one car and one car, you've got to start knocking on doors. There's no sidewalks, there's no curb and gutter. We have school bus stops. People have to walk in the street. They walk home in the street from the bus stop. You walk with your stroller on the street. When there is any congestion or any construction at the Dobie light, people coming down Hamilton cut Seneca to Shaker. Coming up, they see everybody driving, backed up at that light, they cut Shaker onto Seneca. We've had those no-through traffic signs put up. It doesn't work. I've asked the Meridian Township Police to come and babysit them, and they generously do, but you're going to dump more traffic cut in that area by Shaker and Seneca. So this proposal for me alters my existing neighborhood, and I haven't lived there for 31 years to suddenly have the potential for more traffic and more drainage that's not to the benefit of the neighborhood I live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Jerry Fiedewa, followed by Michael McIntosh, and that's the last one I have, so if you would like to speak now, please make sure you fill out a form and give it to Mr. Shorkey.
Good evening, planning members. My name is Jerry Fiedewa. I reside at 6099 East Lake Drive in Hazlet. Been a member of the township now for about 45 years or so. Built probably 300 houses in Meridian Township, and we have built five multi-family projects. Each one of them has a detention pond, and going back to 2002, 2003. There has never been any drainage problems with any of those sites. There's been no smelling, nobody's complained about any smell, nobody's complained about any mosquitoes. So I think that what would happen is, in this 36-unit development, would be that we might even take care of some of the neighbors' water that they're saying that they have. But when, when our engineers are done and the drain department is done, this project will all drain in a, in a slow manner out to Dobie Road and into that Dobie Road drainage system. Regarding, so, I guess is that, so we've done five developments. We've done five multi-family buildings, all really high-end construction, quality stuff, and we have a list of people that want to rent in Meridian Township because of excellent schools and oakmas schools, excellent township. It's just a very nice place to live. And this township has a 40,000, 5,000 kid, student population right next door. So you have a more of a, a larger need for multi-family than a typical town in, in Michigan. And we see it every day. We have, there's tons of people that are looking for rental. Now, you know, some of our people will rent for two and three years because they're quiet, they're energy efficient, and they're nice floor plans. And when we're, and when we're done, they have, some of them have purchased new houses from us, but a lot of them will stay in the area. They end up, like in the area, and they end up staying. So it's a draw for families, and it's a very, very, it's a thing that's needed. Now, one of the things I would say is, just last December, this body unanimously approved this property to be multi-family, and that future is now. So we're asking you today to not be fearful of the traffic, the, the water, and some of those things. Those are not real things that are going to happen. This is going to have 35 cars a day. You remember when, when the, the bridge was closed--
Good times, though.
--and everybody was going up and down?
If the commission has further questions--
Thank you.
--we'll have you come up and answer if commissioners have questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael McIntosh. I live at 4562 Seneca Drive. Unfortunately, my letter to the board did not make it into the communications today, even though it was sent to Brian Shorkey. However, I wanted to mention a portion of what I wrote. That's why I came down here today. If there was a list of people who would like to rent or see these multi-family dwellings, I want to know why they're not here today. Why is it only the church and the Fiedewas that are in favor of this bill? I believe that speaks volumes. During the June 10 meeting, Commissioner Scales stated that the homeowners directly to the west of this parcel would be disproportionately affected by this rezoning. Being a resident directly to the west, I can affirm that this would indeed be the case. The notion that the land is littered with dead trees and discarded electronics is also false. It is a vibrant and valuable natural area. As a former Marine Corps infantryman, I hold values of respect and integrity in high regard. Jerry Fiedewa has shown us residents none of the wish. He was strongly encouraged by the board to meet with the affected residents to the west, and although he is not obligated to do so, none of us have been contacted. This board described the creative solutions that arise when discussions occur between builders and residents, yet nothing has been discussed. I urge the board to recognize this as a sign of Jerry Fiedewa's selfishness and disregard for the community. This issue is clearly not about helping the residents or contributing to Meridian Township's housing needs. It is primarily about financial gain for Jerry Fiedewa. I love this township, I love the people, and I respect those that live here, as do all of the other residents that have attended these meetings. While I understand and respect the parcel owner's right to develop their land, I believe that any new construction should be in harmony with the existing single-family home zoning. I am not opposed to development by any means. I simply advocate for it to consist of single-family homes that maintain the character and integrity of our neighborhood rather than multi-family dwellings. Meridian Township is renowned for its exceptional quality of life, a sentiment echoed by our township supervisor Scott Hendrickson. Preserving our single-family home neighborhoods and natural spaces is essential to maintaining this reputation. Rezoning this parcel to RC would undermine the character and values that make our township a desirable place to live. I urge the board to consider the long-term impacts on our community and reject this rezoning proposal. Let us preserve the sanctity of our neighborhoods and ensure that any future developments align with the principles and needs of our residents. We already live here, and we deserve to be heard. I urge you to not rezone the parcel that will disproportionately affect my family and those around me. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. That was the last public comment form that I have, so I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is--
Anybody else?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? And just a reminder that there is not an opportunity at this item. This is the time, if you wish to speak on anything on the agenda or anything else, this is the time to do it, unless you want to wait until the end of the meeting. With that said, now I am moving to the next thing, which is approval of the agenda, item four. Is there a motion moved by Commissioner Scales? Seconded by Commissioner Blumer. Any discussion?
I didn't give my motion yet.
I saw you raise your hand. I'm anticipating. Would you like to say it out loud?
I move to approve the agenda for the July 8, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Blumer, you still wish to second?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. I'm going to motion to approve the agenda, planning commission for July 8, 2024. Second, any discussion? Commissioner McConnell?
In the minutes, we'll see a discussion from our last meeting about whether certain sidewalks are on our sidewalk master plan, and also a question about the ratio of rental occupied and owner-occupied. And I'm just wondering if those can be included at some point in our discussion this evening. I guess the first one is, is relevant to item 8A. Actually, both are, so maybe they're best left until that discussion.
Okay. Do that, so no need to amend the agenda.
The more I think about it, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. Now we are at the point of approval of minutes of the June 24, 2024 planning commission meeting. Commissioner Scales, yes?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 24, the June 24, 2024 planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner McConnell. I just had one, I think one of the communications, I think the name is misspelled just from looking at a communication we received today. I think there's a T missing in number D.
Okay.
I'll check that.
I will correct that. Thank you.
And then, I did have a question. On approval of minutes of the previous meeting, it said they were, to approve as amended, but it didn't mention how they were amended. I know sometimes if it's just a typographical thing, we don't get into a lot of detail, and I, I did not get a chance to go back and review my notes. They were at home and I was at work. But I think if there's any substantial changes, just referencing what they were, just to make sure that we have a clear--
Yeah.
--path of approval. Since they don't come back as amended in the packet, that's just how they're posted. Any other comments besides mine? Okay. All in favor of approval of the minutes with my minor amendment to correct a typographical thing? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain. I was not at that meeting.
Thank you. So approved with an abstention. And now we are on to communications. I know we have several in our packet, and then we have quite a few more in front of us. And I think you said last time you were amenable to having these listed in the minutes of the meeting so that we have a record of all of the communications that were received?
Yes, in fact, the correction was on email.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And now we are on to public hearings. We have none. Item eight, unfinished business, 8A, rezoning 24013 Fiedewa Holdings on Dobie Road. Mr. Shorkey?
Okay, so everyone's familiar with this by now. This is the Fiedewa rezoning, number 24013, a request to rezone approximately 4.28 acres on Dobie Road from RAA single-family low-density to RC multiple-family, multiple-family maximum 14 dwellings per acre. The history, just real quick, as you know, a similar application for, for a smaller portion of property was denied in 2019. You asked for history of that. That is in your report. You want an idea of some, quote, "missing-middle" housing developments in the last few years, going through approved projects last few years. This is kind of what we've seen. You wanted a comparison between this application in the past and the 2019 application. There is a report on that. You also wanted a discussion, you know, wanted us to research Faith Lutheran's participation in the master plan update, and that is documented here. The original staff report is in your packet as well, and attachment, the, the website here goes to the original packet if you want any of the original attachments. That's common practice. So I'm going to just describe what you have in front of you tonight. You have three options. As always, the township, the, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit. The Township Planning Commission has the right to recommend approval of the rezoning. The Township Planning Commission has the right to recommend denial of the rezoning. Now, to be perfectly clear, any decision they make tonight is non-binding. It is a recommendation. Their decision goes to the township board. They have the ultimate authority on whether or not to approve the rezoning. You do have another option. You do have the authority to recommend an amended proposal. You can recommend a more appropriate zoning district. In this case, if you wanted to stay concurrent with the future land use map designation of multi-family residential, there are two districts that are less dense than the RC district, the RD and the RDD district. That is described here. Things like that, you're allowed that leeway by Michigan planning law. Again, that's a recommendation. Similar recent rezoning, as an example, you had a rezoning where you recommended an RX, I think it was, township planning, township board said, well, okay, but they rezoned it to RN. So there's some flexibility. I'm not making a recommendation. You asked for a, a resolution to approve and to deny. Both of those are in your packet. And I can answer your questions. The applicant is here as well.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Scales?
I have several questions for you. This is a very complex situation that we find ourselves in, yet I think there are ways to resolve this. There could have been ways to resolve this much, much earlier when this was a small problem, but now it is a large, a much larger problem. First, I'd like you to go into a little detail, how this grew from what we addressed when we were addressing the future land use map of the master plan, because my recollection is we weren't discussing 4.23 acres at that time.
Correct. So let's bring up the area. Just so we all see what we're talking about. Here we go. So there's Faith Lutheran Church. You can see Chief Oakmas to the north, you can see the residents to the west and the east and south. So in 2019, there was a request to rezone the northern 2.9 acres of this site. In 2022, 2023, the Township Planning Commission went about the five-year update of the master plan. Now, the master plan is not an ordinance. It's the guiding document that Michigan planning law says you have to have for zoning ordinance that looks at the next 20 to 30 years of development and makes goals and recommendations for that development. Faith Lutheran Church approached the planning commission several times, asked that we, the planning commission, consider changing the northern designation from institutional in the future land use map to multiple-family residential. The-- The request was based on the 2.9 acre project from 2019. After the master plan was adopted, staff received a land division application. The land division application was for the northern portion of Faith Lutheran Church. The land division application met the zoning ordinance. The land division application was for 4.3 acres. Because it met the zoning ordinance, Michigan planning law says we have to approve the land division. The subsequent rezoning request was for the 4.3 acres, not the 2.9 that was considered during the master plan update. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yes, that does. Do I still have the floor?
I know there are a number of other questions. Are yours, is your second question follow-up to that one?
No.
Okay, let's spread it around a little bit then. Commissioner Ronbeck, go ahead and then anyone else who has questions?
Some might not necessarily question, but in reviewing the documents here and actually talking to my wife, it turns out that she has a small marketing deal with Fidoah. And I think based on the conflict of interest statute, MCL 125.33, conflict arises when a member or a member's relative has a direct financial interest positive or detrimental in the outcome of the decision or an action that the member may take as a public official. I actually don't believe this, my situation meets that criteria, but I felt it necessary just to bring it to the, just to bring it to the group transparently. It's a small marketing deal. I'm not sure whom they work with at Fidoah, but several, it was you, sir? Thank you. So I don't know if we can call you up, but I would say it's an overall small marketing deal and it is not contingent upon the outcome of this particular vote because I believe the contract predates my appointment to the board and actually goes forward further past like this day, right? So I don't believe there's any conflict of interest, but I felt the duty to bring it to the board and note it for the record. And it looks like there could be a vote from here or we could just, or whatever. I just want to follow the procedure, make sure it's being transparent, make sure everything's out on the record.
Thank you. And as I understand our process, it's the board may determine whether we feel that there's a conflict of interest that exists.
Correct.
You stand this, Ronbeck? Disclosure? Is it approached, through it now?
Yes. If the, if the Planning Commission believes that the commissioner is going, would potentially personally profit, that's, that's the measuring stick, from an approval and subsequent development, then you have the right to recuse him from this discussion and ultimately the decision.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to give an idea, the contract, I believe, started sometime in June, ends at the end of September roughly. Yeah, so it's a three-month contract. So to me, the timeframe indicates that from June to September is certainly not, does not interact with this. And my appointment to this commission was subsequent to the contract and certainly wasn't related to my wife's marketing efforts because until recently, I didn't even know she had the contract because I pay that much attention. I did write the contracts and they have automatic end dates, so it's not, obviously, there's no condition on the outcome of this written to that contract for me or my wife to profit. But for the sake of transparency, I thought it was worth bringing up. But if it means anything, I would just aver that the contract has zero impact on what my vote would be in this particular matter.
Thank you. Commissioners, would you like to discuss this disclosure? Commissioner Scales, go ahead.
I would just ask the question, does anybody feel like he has a conflict?
I do. I feel like there's a small enough conflict there that it, based on what we've been discussing and who's involved, that it makes sense to recuse him.
Thank you. Anyone else want to share a thought?
I'm looking at the ethics statement that we have on our website and I think maybe the operative phrase is, "I will not participate in any governmental deliberation or action that will directly impact a business entity in which I have a financial or personal interest." Which sounds to me like what Mr. Shorkey was saying. What little I know about this situation doesn't sound to me like there's clearly an impact in a business entity in which I have a financial or personal interest, but can understand others having a different viewpoint.
Anyone else here to share? I'm just checking one thing that you may have already looked at in our bylaw.
I didn't look at my law.
I'm not seeing anything in our bylaw, so.
In the meantime, I'll salute my fellow commissioner because I don't recall an instance in a meeting I've participated in or watched on television that kind of heads up. That's wonderful.
I agree, and I just wanted to say this is no disrespect towards you.
Not taken. I mean, it says at the end, "Planning Commission membership," or what is it, "Failure of a member to disclose a known conflict of interest constitutes malfeasance in office." And I am not for malfeasance in office. I stand firmly against it.
We appreciate that. I guess, Commissioner Blumer, then Commissioner Scales?
I was going to make a motion to allow him to participate in the decision of this matter.
That would be a good way to get the discussion started, thank you.
I support that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Blumer has moved to allow Commissioner Ronbeck to participate. Commissioner Scales has seconded further discussion before we vote on that motion. Commissioner Scales?
I just put my hands on something that if I were looking for it, I would have never found it. It's the Meridian Township Appointment Officials Ethics Statement that we all signed when we became a member. And there's 10 points here and there's, out of that 10, there's one that would be germane to the current issue. And it says, "I will not benefit financially from," nope, that's the wrong one. "I will avoid participating in any public deliberation and decision-making process whenever it becomes apparent that my continued participation will present a conflict of interest or give rise to the appearance of impropriety." But then, there's, "I will not participate in any governmental deliberation or action that will directly impact a business entity in which I have a financial or personal interest." And from all the information that our fellow commissioner provided us, I find nowhere where he has a financial or personal interest here.
In this project.
In this project. So I will vote to allow him to continue to deliberate and also bring to conclusion a vote in this matter.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay.
I have one comment. I, I, I guess I'm, I have a different viewpoint on that, that if someone's spouse, it's not you, you have a personal interest in your spouse doing well. And so in this instance, I would argue that having a direct financial connection to the business that we're talking about at this moment is fairly personal, in my opinion. So I think I'm going to be voting no.
Thank you for pointing. Just to speak, I do plan to support the motion and I agree with you that a spouse's benefit is definitely a personal connection. I guess where I distinguish this is that I think that the project that we're deciding on is not contingent on that contract based on the description that we've received. And so that's why I see the distinction. I think I totally understand where you're coming from on this, but I think it's, to me, it's a difference between this project and benefiting from this project as opposed to benefiting from any work that this applicant might do or separate work by the applicant. Yes, please, Commissioner Blumer?
I also see a difference if she were employed by the Fidoah company. I would, I would definitely see that as a conflict. But they have a finite relationship that's about to expire, that started before this was an issue. I just don't, I don't see the direct connection that's direct enough to disqualify his participation in this matter.
Thank you. If there's no other comment, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Blumer?
I vote to allow it.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
No.
And Commissioner Ronbeck, you're probably.
I think I have to abstain from that.
Abstain from the vote, I would think. And the chair votes yes. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4 to 1. Motion, motion to allow continued participation carries. Thank you for bringing that up and thank you for moving forward. So back to the conversation at hand about rezoning number 24013. Other commissioner questions or comments for staff or the applicant?
Actually, I have one.
Okay, Commissioner Ronbeck?
So Mr. Shorkey, I'm probably catching up here, but the June 10th report, looks like it was a staff report, couple things I want to try to see if are connected or not. So it says the physical features, the subject property is undeveloped and vegetated. I think I would agree, my kids have played at Faith Lutheran, I'm aware of the pirate ship structure and so are they. And then you have the analysis here on the land use for the traffic, right? So it ends up saying plus 169, but if it's undeveloped and vegetated inherently, there's no traffic today.
Correct.
And so I understand there's a 250 additional directional trip limit, which would have tripped up, which would have triggered an impact study.
So it's not compared to what's there, it's compared to the highest and best use of the property. The property is not zoned woodland, the property is zoned RAA. So using, that is what the traffic study was based on, was the density allowed under the single-family designation.
Understood, yeah.
So it wasn't a zero?
Correct. I mean, well, I think maybe my, my argument here is it, I understand the comparison against existing zoning, but the reality is it's zero, right? Because you can't get to this land, it is landlocked essentially, right?
No, it fronts on Dobie Road.
It fronts on Dobie Road? I thought it was.
Yes.
Okay, so it's in front of the, okay.
It is the northern portion of, of the Faith Lutheran site and it has almost 300, yeah, I don't want to quote that, but it has, it has, I think, I think almost 300 feet of frontage.
Dobie frontage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not landlocked. If it were landlocked, then this wouldn't be here because we don't allow development of a landlocked property.
Okay. Yeah, because like I said, my comparison was saying, well, if it's, it seems different if it says it's undeveloped and vegetated and then we're saying, well, if we're comparing traffic against that, but that was my fault. But is it always compared to what it is zoned as rather than what it is, what it is actually is?
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner McConnell?
Not to speak directly forward, but in the spirit of Commissioner Snyder, I was hoping for some further thoughts on the issue of price point that was floated both by the applicant and I think in the packet. And I don't, I haven't, I'm not nearly as knowledgeable about that as Commissioner Snyder did, so I'm, is, so I'm wondering about some of the statements I saw on, our units rent for much less than $1.30 per square foot compared to $2.00 per square foot. Those numbers are not really germane to me. So mortgage for a new 2,000-square-foot home would be about the same as our rent prices. Just, I guess, searching for guidance from staff on the degree to which what's being kind of proposed there meets the sort of thing that we're thinking that we'd like to have more of. Sorry, that's a terrible position to put you in.
So during the master plan update, we, staff did a pretty extensive research project into what our housing picture is vis a vis multifamily housing, well, all housing. It was, it talked about single-family homes and it talked about multifamily residential. And the result of that analysis, and this is all apartment complexes in the township all the way up to, yeah, element, you know, the, a, a single fam, a single-bedroom apartment in the township goes on average for north of $2,000. I don't know if that, so this being a 2,000-square-foot, I'm, I'm, I think I heard the word townhouse thrown around, these are, you know, something like that. From my experience, that's sort of in the ballpark of, like, Meridian Meadows?
What's Meridian Meadows?
Another development up east on Grand River that I used to live in. Thus my research. I don't know if that gets to what you're saying. I, without a specific question, we, that's what we looked at, though. I can, I can tell you that is what the data supports and when we went back and updated it, it's not any, it's not any better.
If I could, a couple of my own?
Yeah, less sort of. Okay, you don't have any? I know Commissioner Scales has more questions too, so we can ping-pong back and forth or you can take your turn.
You can go ahead.
And then he can go after you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scales. The first one, I think, may have been addressed in some communications about the ratio of rental occupied, rental versus owner occupied, which I think was cited at 57.5% for the township. Does that kind of ring a, I've heard and repeated many times the 50%, but I stand corrected.
That's a census, that's a census number and I think that's inaccurate.
And the other was the issue of the walkability of the site and whether that section of the pathway is on our township pathway master plan and what its designation is. Thought that question got asked at one point, but maybe.
I thought I said that it was, it was, that's Dobie Road. Yeah, fronts on Dobie Road, seven-foot pedestrian pathway. Oh, okay. Well, I'm relatively sure it's pathway, but here, if you really want to know.
We have a recently updated trail and pathway.
And while we're searching for that, I know that we can't cause, create a condition on a rezoning application.
Right.
But when applicants come with conditions that make the proposal more attractive, that is, can happen. But I guess for staff, the question is, with the development of the property, would an upgrade to the existing pathway naturally be part of the site plan?
If, if the, if the pathway master plan showed it, yes. The staff report does note that there's a seven-foot pathway. If, for instance, the township pathway plan said it had to be a 10-foot, they would be responsible for upgrading it, yes. I'm.
It looks like a big blue line on Oakmish Road there. You're, you're right there.
Okay. Yeah, that's the Sander Farm. I'm not.
Yeah, go the other way.
See, this is what happens when engineers do maps.
Keep going north.
Okay. This is Central, this is Central Park, that's Marsh, this is Grand River.
There you go.
Bang.
Yep, right there in the middle now.
Up into the right. Keep going right, keep going right, keep going right.
That's Seneca. Yeah, see, you're right there. Okay, I apologize.
I'm such a lousy teacher of mapmaking.
So existing pathway, it is, it is part of the pathway system, yes.
So the expectation is that when that property is developed, that pathway would be constructed to meet our current standards?
If it doesn't, if it does not currently meet our standard, it would be brought up to standard, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Scales?
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
If that's appropriate.
It is.
Is the mic?
Yes, please. Thanks, Mr. Fidoah.
Yes, Mr. Scales?
Yes, Mr. Fidoah. I've known you for many years and I've known the work that you've done. I, I've known you for many years, and I've known the work that you've done, and the work that you've done, uh, specifically in Sierra Ridge is excellent. I know you do good work. But when you first came, uh, before us, I asked you a question. And the question I asked was, what do the neighbors feel about your project? And your response was, well, we'll see. So, now we've seen, what do you suggest now?
Well, I would, I would be reasonable. I had saw that there was an option brought up that the scale could be downsized to eight units an acre. And our development is such that each of our unit will have a two-car garage, and so our, that eight units an acre probably would meet, uh, with, uh, and that would be toning it down, and that would be something that we probably can be, that would be acceptable by toning down the development, uh, maybe adding a fence to the property line, maybe adding a line of trees to the property line. Some of those kinds of things would make it, make the neighbors feel more comfortable in that the detention pond would be away from the kids, uh, the noise would be, any noise or, or any, uh, lighting would be diffused by the trees. Uh, those kinds of things would be acceptable to us.
As Commissioner McConnell stated, and, and I understand, by state law, we cannot have, we cannot offer conditions, but you can offer conditions. But the other thing I stated at that meeting was, I didn't state it, I kind of alluded to the fact that I knew where a church was, and an opportunity for people to get together and talk about this situation, and that never occurred. I think those type of discussions between the various parties would help bring some type of amenable solution to this situation.
Sure.
I can't make anybody do that. I can't order from this dais that upon anybody, but I can recommend and suggest it take place.
Sure.
That's all I have.
You're open.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ronbeck?
This may be for staff, and actually maybe for you, Mr. Fiedler. Um, so, attached in the packet, there is a letter that starts with, "Dear members, thank you for listening to our rezoning application presentation. We appreciate your consideration."
That is correct. That is from the Fiedlers.
Okay. Um, 'cause it is, it is unsigned, undated, and it's not on letterhead, so...
No, no, it's listed as an attachment on the staff report. That is from the Fiedlers.
Okay.
And that is right.
'Cause that, that is where I got confused, um, as to the purpose of that document, because there are some things in here that I cannot determine if it was written in a professional or personal capacity, if there is a commitment in here, and several other items. So, I guess that is helpful, but I'm somewhat interested in the last sentence here, that the people looking for a place to live wouldn't attend a planning meeting to discuss a parcel on Dobie Road, but I think people searching unsuccessfully should be considered in your decision. I'm just wondering how we would do that? Because they're not here, and I can't, I can't ask questions, and they can't, they, they obviously didn't file any documents.
Right. And, and...
Mr. Fiedler, if you're going to speak, we need you out with the microphone.
Sorry, I, I turned toward him, so that's my fault.
That's a point well taken. As a matter of fact, when people are looking for rental units, uh, they won't, I mean, we have people that have to move the next month. Very organized people will try maybe six months in advance, uh, but nobody goes beyond six months. And coming here to a meeting to say that we would like to live in a rental unit that you have, that you're trying to propose in Oakemus, well, that won't be available right away for them to even make that decision. So, they would move on to their next possible rental unit option and won't spend the time to come to a meeting to address the boards, just because they don't have the time to wait for that, that, then the building to take place. So, that's why we, that's why those people are the silent people, but we have an awful lot of them. Uh, we have nothing available in a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage unit in, in Oakemus, or we have one available in Hazlet, but they're not available. And people ask us all the time. So, we have, we reach out in advance, and we have people that are staying two years, three years, and maybe beyond. So, uh, you know, they're, they're highly sought after because they have a three, they have three bedrooms, or are currently proposing, um, a four-bedroom, uh, two-story. That is, uh, o- about over 2,000 square foot, that's four bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, and these are, these are places that are really sought after because of the garage, because of the number of bedrooms, and so forth.
I, I think the crux of my question is, if you were sitting in one of these chairs, how would you weigh the interests of those up against the interests of the residents that are sitting in front of us?
Well, I would say that, you know, it's a, it's a infill project, it's real close inside the city. It has all of the amenities. It has the bus stop up front, it has the pa- bicycle, or the pathway out in front. You know, uh, I, I would say that the land was available for, since, uh, starting in 2019. So, I mean, you know, everybody, I understand, everybody wants to have a woods in their backyard. Everybody desires to have that. Uh, I understand that. Uh, and this here particular project, it's, you can walk places. You can walk places and go places, you can bicycle places. Uh, there's, there's a church right next door. Uh, there's a lot of amenities that are so close that are really sought after by the community, and particularly the schools. People are, uh, really want to be in Oakemus schools. So, with all of those things, they really desire to be, uh, at, at, would love to be at this location. So, I, I try to balance that, and we, as I said before, with the screening in the back and all of that, we would definitely work on doing a bunch of those things to make sure that there was privacy still.
Okay, so the, the commit, what you're saying is the commitments and things averred to in this letter, would, you're, you're telling us that that would carry through this entire process, and these are the things you're committing to?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we're good neighbors. You'll, we'll find out that we're, we're good neighbors. We built, we've built, uh, you know, uh, the Sierra Ridge, we've built, um, the places that are, um, Chief Oakemus Circle, Hamilton Place, Bratton Woods, all of these places are, are nice places to live.
Yeah, I, I would say you, you do have a solid reputation in the community. It's just, like I said, when I was reading the letter, I was trying to figure out what my takeaway, what it should be.
Yep, yep, understand. Hopefully, that added some, uh, ideas or direction for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I do have a question. Uh, Mr. Fiedler, and I miss, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I, I'm guessing you were part of the, or you were aware of the 2023 master plan update when the 2.9 acres of the 4.3 acre subject property was updated?
Yeah, I wasn't as intimately involved as I should have been, yes.
Okay, I'm, so I'm just curious, um, or do you know why we didn't, or you, the request wasn't made to, uh, update the entire 4.8, 4.3?
4.2. I, I think, uh, in, David, you, you do have this. David was involved in all of this. Thank you.
Um, so I was working with Tim Schmidt through that process, and so what it was, we originally proposed, uh, it didn't have an additional 50 feet. And so, all it was when we actually purchased the property from, uh, Faith Lutheran was, uh, through discussion with them, they didn't need an additional 50 feet. So, that's all it was, is we added, uh, 50 feet, and didn't realize that on the, um, the future land use map, that, that line was a hard set line. Um, we just, what we understood was they were portioning the north part of that property to be RC, and so when we originally proposed it, it was 50 feet, and then we slid it 50 feet over, um, because the Faith Lutheran Church offered, and we said, yeah, sure, we'd love to, uh, purchase that portion, and, um, so that, that's where the discrepancy came from, was the fact that it originally was submitted, and then the line slid 50 feet, and that's what we ended up purchasing.
Can I just add to that?
Yeah, of course.
Uh, the 50 feet that he's talking about is 50 feet of width, and that 50 feet of width turned out to be the setback requirement from the institution of the, of the church was a 50-foot. So, it's a, it's a narrow swath of, the depth of it, like 600 and some feet by 50 feet wide, and we're not building in that 50 feet, but that is 50 feet that is needed for a setback. And that's why that we extended that to, so we could be at the original, uh, 300, it's about 300 foot.
Yeah, 298.
298.
Okay, and so now you're requesting this rezon because of that additional?
No, no, we're not requesting a rezon. It has been in the future plan, been future rezoned.
Right.
And we're just requesting the approval of that rezoning now.
Right. Uh, okay, I'm done for now, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Boy, um, I have, uh, been trying to get my head around the 2.9, 4.3, uh, issue for a while, and I'm afraid, uh, discussions with the senior planner about something that's different than the master plan and lines sliding 50 feet, um, I'm, I'm still having real trouble wrapping my head around.
Mr. Shurkey, to go back up and show, uh...
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We, we may call you back with other questions, but, yeah. So, Mr. Shurkey, the, is it indeed the setback portion of, i- is that really what's in question? Is that 50?
I don't understand how you can expand a property to meet a setback requirement. If it's a setback from the church, you're just getting closer as you, you're not, you're approaching the setback, not...
But if the property, because they split the property, I think is how I understand it, so the property is now larger, the parcel is larger, so basically, they've incorporated their setback into their property as, if I'm reading, if I'm hearing it correctly. It might help if you had like a little marker, you could draw a line for us.
Yeah, can we get a whiteboard?
Yeah.
Uh, that is what I'm looking for, okay. So, what the ordinance says is that there's a required 50-foot buffer between development of a multifamily property and any single-family residential zone. The church is zoned R double A, the same as the property. So, on the west side, where there's an, a resi- residential zone, and on the south side, where there's a residential zone, there's a 50-foot landscape buffer. There, from what it sounds like, their land division took into account that 50-foot buffer. So, that's a non-buildable landscape buffer.
So, I, I think I heard you say earlier that after the master plan update, which concerned the 2.9...
Maybe scroll up to the picture just above this one.
Yes, sure.
A land division was requested, which, uh, met our ordinance and therefore had to be granted.
Correct.
And that now we've got, um, new parcels that, uh, don't fit the lines in the future land use map perfectly.
So, they, they do not, um, the lines are drawn with GIS, so they, they appear much more rigid than planning law, but yes, there is a discrepancy of about 1.4 acres.
And is that the northern portion of, no?
No, it's the su- it's this piece, it's this piece here by and large.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go back down for a second.
Okay, sorry.
So, these two pieces here, it's the northern portion of the southern box.
Right, this is the church, this is the existing church.
And...
And then, this is the piece.
So, when they divided the church land, they gave 50 feet at the northern part of the church site to this property, and it, but it wasn't changed in the future land use map. Am I understanding, I'm not, I'm not saying back.
They didn't change the future land use map. They divided a piece of land.
Right.
That's an administrative action.
But the future land use map didn't have that piece of, the, the northern portion of the land that was divided was still future land used in its original...
The master plan was updated before the land division application came in.
Right, okay.
Yes.
So, had that land division been done previously, it is very likely that the master plan would have included the entire, had the division come prior to the approval of the master plan?
That's what we would have used for the, for that, and that's what you would have been asked to make a recommendation on, yes.
Yeah.
All of that is still larger than the 2.9, 2019 application.
Question.
Go ahead, Mr. Scales.
This is going to the, the board as a recommendation?
Correct.
Based on the fact that this is 25,000 square feet or larger?
No, it's a rezoning.
It's a rezoning.
Okay, all right, I just wanted...
We don't know, we don't have that 25,000 number yet because we aren't at special use permit application, we aren't at site plan, there's a lot of the site-specific questions, such as drainage and roads, that will, that would get answered if it gets past the rezoning, but they aren't even there yet.
Based on the previous 2019 information, and based on the largeness of this, this proposal, this greater than the 2.9 that the board and the planning commission agreed on changing, I see no reason to recommend this to the board to pass it.
Did I hear a motion for the resolution not to approve?
No, we're, we're in discussion, Scales. We're in discussion, I want to hear what other people, what other people feel. I'm just, I'm stating a point. Uh, we know what the board feels on one hand, uh, several members were part of the planning commission in 2019, but we also know what the board feels on the other hand, they approved what we recommended in the future land use. So, it is obviously, it's, it's up to us to make a sound decision here and help shepherd it forward. So, yes, I will, I will make, I will make a motion. I will, I will make a motion to...
Here, have a...
Okay, go ahead.
There's two options here.
No, I'm not, I'm not limited to the two options.
You are not, you are not.
Jeez. Write this down.
I'm, I'm looking at RC at 14 units per acre, I'm looking at RA, I mean, RD at eight units per acre.
Right.
But I like RDD, five units per acre, so that it's not as dense. Density has been the largest problem that I've heard, other than, than traffic, but traffic is associated with density. So, absent all parties getting together and sitting down and talking about this and trying to, to find some type of resolution, I would offer that we recommend RDD, uh, amend to get to RDD, which is five units per acre, and let's have discussions about that going Now, would that cause for you to write us another resolution and bring it back to us at a future meeting?
Wasn't there an option there of a different...
I think we could, yeah, I, I think we could amend the recommend, resolution to recommend approval... Yeah, I think we could amend the recommend, resolution to recommend approval, and swap out RDD with the ensuing definition of multiple family maximum five dwelling units per acre, in place of RC, multiple family maximum fourteen dwelling units per acre, in the two places in which it appears.
Would that... I would suggest, if you're gonna, I think that makes sense, I would add a whereas, this is whereas, the planning commission finds that the requested RC is too dense for the area, is more, is too dense, towards that effect, too dense for the area, denser than the character, you know, does not fit the character of the area, something along those lines, I would add a whereas along those lines, that states why you don't think the RC is appropriate.
Mr. Scales, would you care to, oh, Mr. Ramback?
So maybe just a point of clarification for me, what is the requirement that we vote one way or another tonight? Is it statutory, or is it just process-driven? Because candidly, what I started to hear from both the FEDOAS and the residents is, seems that people were moving some ways where they could find some level of comfort with each other, and the other part is, is there, is there any option where if we, I presume in the application, it was, there was a finite request, we request rezoning to X, and if we approve Y, do they have to go back and refile the application?
No.
We recommend to the township board, so our action tonight allows this question to move forward to the next step, and so it may be a question for the applicant, and I don't know yet, because we have not taken a vote, but if it is clear that the will of the planning commission is not to recommend what you've asked for, but to recommend something else, is it your preference that you be given an opportunity to do some more work on this and come back to the planning commission, and we may or may not take up your preference, but just, you know, or would you prefer that this move forward and you begin to make your case with the township board, whether or not it, you know, I don't want to throw this at the board, I want to, I want to make sure we make a good decision and a good recommendation here, but the process keeps moving forward one way or another more cleanly, I think, at some point, I'm not trying to punt this question to the board, but I think it is a complicated question, and at some point, it, it still has a public hearing at the board.
Yes, yes.
And then the board makes a decision, so there's still more opportunities for conversation.
In fact, there's three meetings at the board, there's an introduction, there's a, I forget the formal terms, but there's a middle and then an action. To go back to your earlier question, I guess that's a fourth option I didn't think of, yes, you, if you wanted to ask to table this, you can do that if it's supported, but if, state a reason, though.
Yeah.
Don't, yeah, I mean, process-wise, yes, you are supposed, you've had the public hearing, you've had an extra meeting, you, so, you know, normally the planning commission makes the decision at the next meeting, you've had two meetings since then, you, you are in a position where you are authorized to make a decision, but if you think that there's some kind of movement, and you wish to make a motion to table it if it's accepted, then this will come back.
Yeah, like I said, I heard some from the residents say that we would be more amicable to a particular rezoning, I heard some concessions from the FEDOAS, you know, and that goes back to Commissioner Scales, and what I've written to the record was that, you know, there was a question of what do the residents think, and that kind of gets to it, because all of a sudden, it's like, the residents are talking, the FEDOS are talking, they're not talking to each other, and is there some value in that?
Okay, but you cannot require...
I'm not going to require it, I would, I would just...
You can suggest, and I know that this has been discussed, but you can't, okay.
That would not be the crux of my motion.
Okay, okay.
So, is it back to me?
Sure, Commissioner Brooks, go ahead and then...
Don't we have a motion on the table that...
No.
I thought...
No, no, he was saying I...
I was making a motion, and we were formulating the words of the motion, good, good catch.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, I, I heard that I should have another whereas in there, in making, amending this resolution?
It's a suggested, because you're, this, this resolution is, is designed to recommend approval of the RC, you're not, if you're not wanting to recommend approval of the RC...
No.
You should have a whereas saying why you don't think the RC is appropriate, that RDD is, does that make sense?
Yes.
While he's doing that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Shorkey, the, the northern part of this property, what, can you remind me, what is it currently zoned as?
R double A.
Which is?
Single-family, low-density residential, I can show you exactly.
The whole property is zoned R double A.
Right, the whole is zoned that way.
It's, the distinction is in the future land use map, where the northern portion is...
RC.
Our multifamily, I don't think it has a zoning designation, it has a...
The which one, I'm sorry?
Northern one.
The, the future land use map.
Is, of the future land use map for the church?
For the property, for the property.
For the property?
Is...
Is split right now between multifamily residential and institutional.
But all three of the multifamily things...
All of the multifamily...
Within multifamily.
Yes, yes.
But RD is, I'm sorry, RC is the most dense of those options.
Of the three that you're looking at.
Of the three options that we're looking at, okay.
Here's your, R double A dimensions and requirements, just so you're wondering, so side yards ten feet, but that doesn't matter in this case, because there's a fifty-foot setback, landscape setback, that has to be acknowledged, because it's a multifamily development, well, I mean, no, I'm sorry, let me, let me say that again, if this was developed as a single-family home, there'd be a ten-foot setback inside, what you want to see, though, minimum lot area is thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, so a little bit less, so, if you'll indulge me...
Yes, please put that in some...
Four point two eight times forty-three thousand five hundred sixty, divided by thirteen five hundred, just a gross number, you wouldn't get this, because you'd have to build roads, and you'd have drainage things, but just a gross number you'd get, I'm going to truncate it to thirteen units.
On the current...
On the current four point two eight acres, under our double A zoning, now, like I said, you wouldn't get that, you've, we, we don't allow access via easement, so you'd have to build a local road up the middle, you'd have, you know, land taken up by stuff like that, stormwater systems, things like that, but that's your gross number.
So, in light of the impending motion that Commissioner Scales is currently drafting, the, so if we were to increase the zoning from R double A to the, I'm blanking on what this one's called, but it's like the five units...
RD, yup.
RDD. RDD, or the eight units, which is the, or not eight units, but eight units per acre.
The eight units per acre is, you get in that thirty to thirty-five range that the FEDOAS have proposed in their letter.
Right.
If you go with the RDD, which is five units per acre, I'll truncate that to a gross number of twenty-one, but again, you're not going to get that, you've had a fifty-foot landscape buffer, if nothing else, on the, on the western and south properties, take that up.
So we've got like, the eight times four is thirty-two roughly, then the five times four is twenty roughly, versus the current, which is thirteen?
Yeah, yeah.
But, Commissioner Scales, I'm sorry.
The, the fixes for this resolution that I heard recommended don't solve the problem.
Okay.
Why don't we take a break, we've been, we've been at this for a little while, why don't we take a ten-minute break, and give time to write a complete resolution?
Okay, are you asking me to run upstairs and turn my computer on and put something together for you, because I can do that if you'll let me use the restroom first?
That is what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yes.
And do you have direction, because I'm reading through it, and I can see a couple of places.
Okay, yeah, let me give you some, let me give you some direction on that, because what this is saying, in the resolution to approve, it's saying that everything that's before us is good, and that is not what my intent is, everything before us is not good, the four point two eight is not good. My intent is to reduce the density dramatically...
Right.
To address the issue of the master plan point of preserving the neighborhoods, not just saying that the proposed redevelopment of the existing building complies with master plan goals regarding increased housing diversity.
Mm-hmm.
I want to address the issue of preserving the neighborhoods, and the end result of this motion is to create more discussion. Number one, I heard Mr. FEDOAS say he could reduce down to eight, but he didn't say he could reduce down to five, so I want to give him something that he's not happy with. The residents said they would, they could support single-family housing, but they couldn't support the density that they were faced with, so I want to bring the density way down, and maybe the two parties in the interim can find some common ground, and maybe we can come back and eventually have something that can work in that community, if not, move the whole project to downtown Oakliss and put it in that dirt parking lot over there. Does that give you some type of idea of where I'm going with this?
Yes.
Can I ask a question before we...
Yes, please.
Do we think that we can have something like this ready in order for us to vote on it this evening, that we're comfortable voting on this and then submitting it up to the board?
We'll see.
And, and doing something also that the, that we, so we're saying, we're going to change the zoning request from the applicant and the property owner's perspective?
No, I'm not seeing that, we can't change the, we can't change his request.
His request is his request, we're changing our recommendation.
You are making a recommendation, plus, it's going to go forward as it is.
Right.
Yeah, and, and one, I guess, concern I have is just for, for Mr. Shorkey here, and for all of us, I, I don't want to predetermine our outcome, but I also don't want to waste your time in drafting something, I, I hate to do this to you, Mr. Scales, but I'm thinking we might want to have a little bit more discussion, to, to, yeah, kind of, are we inclined to be willing to consider this direction, because otherwise, we're asking him to do something that is for naught, and I don't want to do that.
Now, do we dare? I, I've been sitting on a comment for quite a while here, and with all due respect to Mr. Scales, Commissioner Scales, I would, I think most of you know what I do for a living, so I'm used to adjudicating things, I have personal experience with the FEDOAS, they basically rebuilt the exterior of my house, and they did a phenomenal job, so I have no problem with the quality of their work. The, the problem I have here is that any type of multifamily unit that would be approved by us is completely inconsistent with the character of the existing neighborhood, which has been stable for forty years. I would never vote in favor of something which would deprive the owner of that land, Mr. FEDOAS Company, of an ability to build something on it, but he already has permission to build some rather nice, single-family dwellings, which would be consistent with the existing neighborhood, so with all due respect, if we had an option to reduce it to five unit, five multifamily units per acre, I would still vote against it, because even though you are trying to find a happy compromise between the two extremes, it still would be an imposition on the existing character of an otherwise very stable neighborhood, and, and I heard people say that they would approve single-family dwellings, because that's what's already there, I mean, they simply can't stop that, but it wouldn't, anything which would be a denser development than that would fundamentally change the character of the existing neighborhood and the people who have lived there for, for decades, so I, I would vote against anything other than a denial of the request to rezon.
And I guess that's where I sort of jump in, was to say, this is a conversation that we did have at some theoretical level, when we were reviewing and approving the master plan, and in that, we said as a group, and the township board also said, that at least for a portion of that property, we were okay with it being multifamily as opposed to being single-family, now, granted, this is a larger piece of property, which, given the extension, and, and this is why it's before us, and, you know, I, I think that the extension allows more building, because it builds in the buffer that gives them the ability to develop more, so this is a really worthwhile question for us to be talking about, and, and discussion to be having, but, but we already discussed and theoretically supported a change that you're now saying you're opposed to, and, and I'm not trying to make this personal, but...
No, that's fine, I just want to make my point clearer, understand that master plan and land use is, isn't, is a permission, it's not, it's not a mandate.
Absolutely.
Just because they can do it, doesn't mean we have to approve them doing it.
Yes.
As long, as long as not approving it, doesn't deprive the landowner of a reasonable alternative use of the property. If we were to simply say, we're not going to approve any building there, that would be taking his property without just compensation, that would be illegal and it would be improper, we can't do that, but the property's already zoned for multiple housing development, so we're not taking away an ability to build something profitable on that property, we're just saying, we're not, my position is, I'm uncomfortable saying yes to anything other than what is already recognized as appropriate to that neighborhood.
Commissioner Robert?
I find Commissioner Scales' efforts to put something together that we can vote on admirable, but personally, and this might just be my junior status here, having to do my secondary, I just don't feel like I'm going to be comfortable to vote on that. I, you know, took the time to read this, and the resolutions and those sorts of things, and I joined Commissioner Blumer, I, I feel like the request is X, and I would rather, I use the term adjudicate, I'd rather adjudicate approval or denial, rather than, well, you know, we came, we designed something in a single meeting after hearing everybody's feedback, so that would be my two cents, is I would, I would prefer not, if, and this almost goes back to my proposal earlier, which would be to table it, allow for more time, because if we want another option, or if we want, you know, more communication, or if we want more information, that buys us that, because this is not, this is not a light decision.
Mr. McColl?
Thank you for that, it, it helps clarify in my mind that the, the same principle that prevents us from imposing conditions on an application, feels to me like it should restrain us from trying to come up with a different solution than an applicant has brought to us, that feels to me exceeding our authority. I'm also more comfortable either waiting to see if there's another option that is brought to us that is more acceptable, tabling this issue, or moving on either accepting it, or recommending its acceptance, or recommending its denial. My sense of the commission at the moment is that we would tend in favor of recommending denial, explaining, if we had, if we felt we had to act tonight, that we would recommend denial, explaining why, and I believe that our draft resolution, our draft motion recommending denial says it's... And I believe that our draft resolution, our draft motion recommending denial says it's incompatible with the... So, I don't, there was a question asked earlier. Do we interrupt a clock that's ticking by state law by not making an action on this, this issue tonight?
The state law clock was met with the public hearing. You can take the time you need. Having said that, as your staff are asking, if you intend to table this, what, to what end?
What end, yeah.
Like, do you think, do, you know, to what end?
That, that would be me. And, and I, I think you're right that I'm hearing that there is not full-throated support for the proposal as presented to us. And so then it becomes a question of, are we inclined to deny it tonight? Or would giving additional time to the applicant provide them an opportunity to, what, what would we want to see from an applicant between now and the time that we do take this up again? And, and is that something that is going to happen, or are we going, because I think part of the reason that this was delayed, we had, there are a number of factors that resulted in this being on this agenda versus our last meeting agenda. But some of that, I think, was the hope. And they've had four weeks now to, to do anything else based on what we heard at our initial meeting on this and what we heard at the last meeting, although it wasn't on the agenda. And I, I'm inclined to say, unless we have some assurance that an ensuing next amount of time, if we table this, is going to give us new information, I, I'm not sure what would be different. So it is essentially your to what end? Commissioner Scales?
I have two points. I think that was some very good discussion that we had among ourselves. Don't cut on your computer. But sometimes you have to do things to drive people to make a decision.
Sure, 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 sure.
And as far as tabling, I, I don't want to table this. These people have been coming here time and time and time again, and they deserve an answer out of us tonight, whether it's yes, we're going to recommend it for, to the board, or no, we're going to recommend it to the board, not to accept. But they need to be, be able to dispose of this unit, the planning commission, and move to the board with whatever their position is. And same with the, um, uh, Mr. Fiedler. They need to hear something from us. So what's your pleasure, folks? What do you want to do?
Well, your motion has not been seconded.
He didn't make a motion. He was still talking about the motion.
I would like to make a motion.
I'm trying to put us in motion.
Scroll down to draft motion to deny.
If you go to page four of this, this item.
This is the approval, this is the denial.
I think it's up further, though, in your, you had...
Oh, the motion. Oh, sorry, the language.
I think that might help, Commissioner Blumer. I found it very helpful.
There.
Down a little, yep, there you go.
I see it there, in the dark. All right. I would like to propose a motion to adopt a resolution to recommend denial of rezoning number 24013 to rezone approximately 4.28 acres located on Dovey Road from RAA, single-family low-density to multifamily RC. And the reasons I'm making this motion are that the proposed rezoning does not match the character of adjacent residential neighborhoods to the west. Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Blumer and supported by Commissioner Scales to adopt the resolution to recommend denial of rezoning 24013 to rezone approximately to 4.28 acres on Dovey Road from RAA to RC. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Scales and then Commissioner Robert?
Procedurally. Now, what we're saying is, the language in here is that 4.2 acres, not the 2.9, the 4.4.28 acres.
It has to be rezoned.
It, it says, move to adopt the resolution to recommend denial of, of rezoning this property approximately 4.2 acres. So what we're saying is, no to 4.2 acres.
Yes, you are.
What does this allow to happen going forward? Another proposal to us, or just moving it on to the board?
This application, all the communications, your resolution, all of the staff memos, attachments, will all get forward to the township board. Okay? They can accept your recommendation. They can approve the request. They can approve something other than the request, like was done with the Shaw Street property. They have latitude, just as you have latitude, to recommend.
That satisfactory answer?
I am completely satisfied.
Mr. Robert?
So similarly, let's presume for a second the board concurs with our denial. Where does that put the applicant? Do they go back to square one?
Correct.
So whatever they've put into it, if they reapply, it restarts, it restarts the clock.
Correct.
And we'll see it all over again.
And we'll see it, we'll see it again.
So there's a minimum, minimum timeframe for the same application that they have to wait per the ordinance. They would be free to submit a different application. They would be free to sit down and discuss what, you know, what happened here and talk about paths forward. There's, but this application, in, in it, on its face, you wouldn't see again for a while. I can't, I don't, I don't have that on top of my head. At least a year, though.
Can we make comments?
Yes, this is time for discussion on the motion that's on the table. So if it's related to the motion, yes, you can.
All right. So I just want to say a few things. So first, I, I, I'm going to be voting and support of this denial. And however, that doesn't mean that I will for, in the future, when, if this votes to get rezoned again. And the reason is because this is part of the master plan. It's within the urban service boundary. And I think that building density is appropriate for what we're trying to do in the township and what our goals are. And that I hear the concerns about traffic on the one side, but then also see the need for development and new places for people to live because we don't have a ton of land use, land left to build in, inside the urban service boundary. So I think this is, just happens to be one of those properties that are right on this boundary, which makes it a very difficult space to work in. And that's it.
Any other comments before we vote? Commissioner Blumer?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
No.
Commissioner Roback?
Yes means you're voting to deny.
I know, but I was going a little bit differently because, I hate to opine here, but when the board allowed me to vote in this matter, when I divulged what was not found to be a conflict of interest, I saw some consternation amongst the residents. I think in transparency, maybe for the best efforts, I'm going to abstain from the vote. I think that is the, although I was allowed to participate and I appreciate the participation, when I saw the reaction of the residents, I don't feel like it's appropriate for me to vote. So I'm going to abstain on this one. However, I'm not going to forebode myself from voting on any further applications from Fiedler because they are a builder here, and that would probably make it nearly impossible for me to serve in this commission. So I'll note it with those, with those points. I will abstain.
Thank you. So Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
And I, chair votes yes. So I count that as four, one, and abstain.
Okay. All of this will be sent to the township board, and I don't have the date of that at this point.
Can we take it?
So we'll let you know.
Yes. So, thank you very much. And for those of you who are here for this, next, all of this will then go to the township board and it's not back at the planning commission until or unless the board sends it back to us or it comes again as a different proposal. Thank you very much. And I have heard a request for us to take a short break, so yes.
You've lost a call.
Thank you. Yeah. Why don't we reconvene at 10 minutes? 10 minutes, okay. A hard 10 minutes, though, not a, not a loose 10 minutes. I want to go home. I want to go home.
11A, project report. I saw you have one in our packet.
Yeah, you have an updated project report. Three new applications that I added. SP, SUT is under review for sand. The sand has been moved to the board. A urbana is just, will be moved to the board now. The rezoning for Copper Creek will, that'll say, continue under review. That's going to the board. Consumers Energy, I moved from a new application to under site plan review. We have received the site plan for the Consumers Energy site. The one I really wanted to call your attention to, Silverleaf PUD Phase 1, has finally received its site plan approval and is moving forward. So the first 25 homes of that. I was handed that site plan on day two, so it's taken about a little over two and a half years for me to get it to that point.
That's great. Can Trader Joe's be moved to Dunn, or is it still under construction here?
Which one? I'm sorry.
For Trader Joe's?
Trader Joe's shows as soon.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll take that on.
I got a question about.
Commissioner Scales?
One is missing from here, and that's the Village of Oakhamis. What's going on?
The official line is that they are still in site plan review.
Yeah, but I've got information that they said, we're putting this on hold indefinitely. Is that correct?
I am telling you what I can tell you. And I have not been told anything else officially at this point.
Well, I got my information from the property owner's representative.
I'm not disagreeing with you in telling me what I can tell you.
Another transparency issue here. Okay, I get it. I get it.
Do you know what the status of townhouse is?
Oh, the Barubian Restaurant? Hopefully about to open, from what I heard today.
Because he was injured or something.
They weren't going through site plan. They were just building permits, so I don't know specifically, but my understanding is that they're pretty close to opening.
Yeah, would be great. Any other questions on the project report? Okay, we are at item 12, public remarks. Would anyone like to speak during this portion of public remarks? Please, do we need another form, or can we use the same form?
I know, 8:40, and we are reconvening the July 8 meeting of the Meridian Township Planning
Commission regular meeting. We are on item 8B, rezoning number 24015, Copper Creek, Phase 5.
You saw this at your last meeting. This is the request to rezone approximately 139 acres on Haslett Road from rural residential to RA, single-family residential. Would make it the same as the existing Copper Creek. This is indeed the next phase of the Copper Creek development. We had one person who came from Williamstown Township who asked some questions. I have not heard back from him. And you indicated support for this, so there is a resolution supporting approval in your packet. As before, this is a rezoning, so this will go to the township board for their final approval.
Thank you very much.
Could you scroll to the proposed adoption language, please?
Of course.
Thank you. I move to adopt the resolution to recommend approval of rezoning number 24015, to rezone the subject property on Haslett Road from RR Rural Residential to RA, single-family residential.
Thank you. Is there a second? Support from Commissioner Scales to adopt the resolution to recommend approval of rezoning 24015. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, almost in favor. Commissioner, I'm sorry, roll call. Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramback?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Blumer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion is adopted. Yes, the motion is adopted. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now we are on to special use permit number 24017, Havana adult-use marijuana.
And once again, this is a request, this is special use permit, as you said, for adult-use marijuana. It will go to the township board because all SUPs for adult-use marijuana facilities do. We have had no comment on this, and you indicated support, so there is a resolution of support in your packet.
Thank you. May I entertain a motion?
I would like to move to adopt the resolution to recommend approval of SUP number 24017 to construct an adult-use marijuana provisioning center at 2119A Haslett Road, Haslett, Michigan.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Brooks and supported by Commissioner Scales to adopt the resolution to recommend approval of special use permit number 24017 to construct an adult-use marijuana provisioning center at 2119A Haslett Road in Haslett. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will call the roll call. Commissioner Brooks?
Support.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramback?
Yes.
Commissioner Blumer?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion, resolution is adopted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
We are on to 9A, other business, looking for a representative, missing representative to the Corridor Improvement Authority.
I spoke to Economic Development Director Clark about this. It is not mandated that the planning commission have a representative on the Corridor Improvement Authority. You may, at your discretion, have one. It's not a position that's in their bylaws or anything like that. It's, as you noted at your last meeting, it's advisory. The planning commission representative doesn't vote, so if you have somebody that wants to go to the CIA meeting, that's fine, but if you, like last meeting, you kind of have a standstill and you don't appoint somebody, that will not impede the activities of the CIA.
Thank you. Remind us again when they meet, it's on Wednesdays at?
It's.
Remind.
I believe it's the third Wednesday of each month.
Okay, in the evening, right?
That was Commissioner Brooks's problem. He was coming off the CIA into the zoning board of appeals, and then I had an automatic schedule conflict.
Okay.
I believe it's at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, okay. So, before we decide that we don't have anyone, is there anybody who would be willing to volunteer for this responsibility? Hearing none. Could you ask them possibly, or could you, whoever staffs that, to just add me to their agenda meeting list? And then, if there are things that seem relevant to us, it might be that we would discuss amongst ourselves to try to get somebody there, or I could try to be there?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
All right, that would be great. I really can't commit to being a regular member even just once a month, but it would be helpful to stay informed if that is possible.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody? Okay, great, thank you. We are down to 10, so you may as well stay right there. Reports and announcements, township board up there, 10A.
I have nothing for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. And 10B, the news on reports. Does anyone have any news on reports?
I have one.
Commissioner Scales?
It's to, Mr. Sharkey, can you make sure that the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority know that I am the representative and include me in the packet?
I will double-check with Director Clark.
I was marked absent to a meeting that I was never notified of.
The Downtown Development Authority canceled another meeting because of lack of business, lack of issues.
The Economic Development also canceled their meeting for tomorrow.
Thank you. Anything else?
We did have a zoning board of appeals meeting, and we had four, I suppose you call them applications or requests, and all four were approved.
What?
What kind of things?
You want me to?
What sort of? This is a quiz.
Okay, well, I'll tell you two. One was the 242 Church property on Jolly Road. I think that's where it is. They own two parcels there, and, or Bennett Road, sorry, sorry. And they requested, I believe the term, this is my first meeting, so you're testing my language here, but I believe they were requesting an easement on a bridge that they were building because the bridge was crossing two properties and didn't have the correct setbacks, I believe. And so they were asking for an easement on that requirement. Is that correct?
It was a, it's an Eagle Scout project.
It is an Eagle Scout project.
It's building a bridge, I love the symbolism of it, by the way. It's building a bridge over the creek with your barn, but they didn't know is that there's a property line there. So you had two side setback issues.
Yeah. And the second.
My question wasn't so much to put you on the spot, but more to alert other members of the commission that the stuff that goes there is stuff that you might think would come here, but it tends to be more small exceptions kind of stuff.
So, no, no, you prompted me, so now I'm going to tell you. So, yeah, now you're stuck. The second one is actually relevant to that because the second one is the property that's to the east of Trader Joe's. And so if you recall, we did the special use permit for the drive-through there. So then, after that, we just saw this at the ZBA, they needed to request a set of the language, basically a set of.
Variances?
Variances, that's the word, thank you.
Is it Trader Joe's or Whole Foods?
No, it's Trader Joe's. Because Trader Joe's is right there.
Bank of America, coffee.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was on the other side.
The unknown coffee spot.
Okay. Okay, I was thinking.
So after we had this back and forth about that, and the curb cuts and the sidewalks and everything else, then what happened after that was they had to request all these variances, basically to be able to build in the design that they were requesting, which I thought was interesting. The other two, the other two I can't, I don't think came through here, but that one definitely did.
Anything else?
50%.
11A, project report. I saw you have one in our packet.
Yeah, you have an updated project report, three new applications that I added. SP, SUT is under review for sand. The sand has been moved to the board. A urbana is just, will be moved to the board now. The rezoning for Copper Creek will, that'll say, continue under review. That's going to the board. Consumers Energy, I moved from a new application to under site plan review. We have received the site plan for the Consumers Energy site. The one I really wanted to call your attention to, Silverleaf PUD Phase 1, has finally received its site plan approval and is moving forward. So the first 25 homes of that. I was handed that site plan on day two, so it's taken about a little over two and a half years for me to get it to that point.
That's great. Can Trader Joe's be moved to Dunn, or is it still under construction here?
Which one? I'm sorry.
For Trader Joe's?
Trader Joe's shows as soon.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll take that on.
I got a question about.
Miss your scale?
One is missing from here, and that's the Village of Oakhamis. What's going on?
The official line is that they are still in site plan review.
Yeah, but I've got information that they said, we're putting this on hold indefinitely. Is that correct?
I am telling you what I can tell you. And I have not been told anything else officially at this point.
Well, I got my information from the property owner's representative.
I'm not disagreeing with you in telling me what I can tell you.
Another transparency issue here. Okay, I get it, I get it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what the status of townhouse is?
Oh, the Barubian Restaurant? Hopefully about to open, from what I heard today. Because I don't have the specifics.
Because he was injured or something.
They weren't going through site plan, they were just building permits, so I don't know specifically, but my understanding is that they're pretty close to opening.
Yeah, would be great. Any other questions on the project report? Okay, we are at item 12, public remarks. Would anyone like to speak during this portion of public remarks? Please, do we need another form, or can we use the same form?
I know who they are.
Okay. Please give us your name and address when you come up. Thank you.
I've been taking notes the whole night, so again, I'm Deborah Major, 24-year Meridian Township President, 4570 Seneca Drive. And I just wanted to thank you for listening to me and to my neighbors. This process reminded me how long my neighbors have actually lived in Navajo Ridge and in Shaker Heights, and how committed they are to this community. I feel heard by this board, and I really appreciate it. I look forward to supporting our position with the township board. And I just continue to feel the need to say that the 2023 master plan is a guideline suggestion. It's not written in stone. It wasn't the rezoning, which is what Tim Schmidt told me himself at the listening session on June 25th. So I continue to hope that you'll all keep that in mind because I know from my research that Ann, Tim Schmidt, told me that there were only seven updates from the 2017 master plan to the 2023 master plan, and our backyard property on Dobie Road happened to be one of those updates, and we weren't notified that that change was going to be made, and so we did not appear at those meetings, and that's why we're in full force here now, just like we were in 2019 when we were actually notified that the board was going to be discussing it. Had we been notified, I guess, more directly in 2022 and 2023, when you started those conversations about changing the master plan, you would have had us all here then, too. So I, you know, I don't think it was a coincidence that the seller and the buyer were here, but not the neighbors to those meetings. So again, I appreciate your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Okay, we are at commissioner comments. Anyone have anything else you'd like to share?
I just want to go on the record. I told a couple of the people who visited us today that I want to make it a matter of record, I was very impressed with the articulate and intelligent presentations from the community on this issue.
of the PhD. So people who take the time to read our master plan and consult and then bring it back to us and say, is this what you intended? Again, it's, it's what we're all about. We do still have in our master plan, an objective to preserve the character of existing single-family residential neighborhoods. And I wanted to, just remind us that that objective falls under a broader goal that we adopted purposefully to strengthen and expand residential opportunities. And that's, in my mind, the policy question that we're sitting on here is, we've got some great neighborhoods, we want to do infill development, there's ultimately going to be friction, and where does it lie? Arguments about protecting sanctity or avoiding transient populations who don't keep up their properties as well as owners starts to rub me in a direction I'd rather not be rubbed in. And I'd like to quote, I believe, maybe I paraphrase, former Commissioner Primo, who was a builder himself by trade and had a lot of great insight. And at one point, I heard him say, we all live in houses somebody else didn't want. Which isn't absolutely true.
I think that was paraphrasing. I think that was a trap.
But it hit me that that's often the case. And finally, because I know that Commissioner Snyder is at home watching and listening to every word, I did visit Trader Joe's this weekend, and I did approach the property through the old Bank of America site. And I followed a customer of Trader Joe's going up across that, one step right into the parking lot, right into the store. So there's already a pedestrian access that's operating there. Love it. Thank you very much for indulging me.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scales.
I just want to announce the 2024 Meridian Pride event will be Saturday, August 10th, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Marketplace on the Green, which is 1995 Central Park Drive. If you have any questions, you can dial area code 517-853-4576, or email shorkey@meridian.mi.us.
Lots of emojis.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. I just want to speak to Commissioner McConnell. I appreciate you raising the need to keep the public comments civil and respectful and agree with you completely. And I believe you mentioned, and we've talked to Mr. Shorkey already, about starting our meetings with a statement that's similar to one that's used by the township board that will just remind folks who are here that while they're welcome to share opinions, they should not be using the time to personally abuse or detract anyone else. So I think we can make that happen.
One last thing.
Please. Always need to have the last one.
I'll say. I think we identified a transparency issue that we have with our process, and the public has just pointed it out to us. We're guided by state law in dealing with our notifications with 300-foot boundary. That's good for the state, but being the local unit of government, we really want to hear the voices of the community. And in order to get that voice, we need to invite them. When we have issues such as this issue, we know there's another side to this story, and we need both sides to make our final decisions as we did tonight. We did great after we got all the sides out on the table. And so thank you for pointing that out to us, and hopefully we will do better in the future.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
I do.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 9:02. Goodbye, everybody. And thank you for sticking with us all night.